The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of February 2, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not listed on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a speaker card. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify the agenda item on which they wish to speak will be presumed to be speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Please give your completed cards to the clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
We have received one speaker card from Michael Turnipseed.
Thank you. Mr. Turnipseed?
On item 3B.
Just one point of clarification before I start. Does the city consider both this meeting and the tonight meeting at 5:15 the same meeting?
Two different meetings.
So theoretically, I just have to come back later as an inconvenience because I want to talk on two topics. That's what you're saying?
If that's the way you'd like it for your DTS.
Well, that's the facts of the way it is. I'm sorry. All right. I'm here today. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. And I want to talk about 3B charter review.
Mr. Turnipseed, could you speak up a little? We're having some problems hearing. Thank you. Go ahead.
I have never been told that I don't speak loud enough. I went through and I reviewed the city charters, reviews that have happened since 1941. There's been 15 of them. Many of them have had several topics. Many of them have been single topics. The last one was done in 1996, which only had one topic, conflict of interest of the council. The one before that was in 1998, 1988, excuse me, which were major revisions. We want to see revisions going forward in a broad scope of looking at the entire charter, what needs to be done. There's civil service reforms we think need to happen. There are legislative powers of the council, and I'd like to propose that you also look at expanding your powers for the power to oversight and audit. There's all kinds of talking about vendors having oversight over vendors and franchisees, but there's nothing of oversight about staff. There's nothing about performance audits on the daily operations of the city, and I think that is a critical thing that needs to happen. And finally, the officers appointed by the council, we think you should create a "position" for that auditor. He can be contract, he can be hired, to go through and review performance department issues and other issues that comes to the council that you deem that need to be audited. Thank you for your time, and I'll be back in a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers for items on tonight's agenda?
We -- no, we do not.
Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
We have one public speaker regarding an item not listed on the agenda, Michael
For the record, I -- Michael Turnipseed representing the Kern County Taxpayers Association. I have two things I wanted to talk about. One was the agenda item on the 5:15 Agenda Number 7, C, F, and H, and the other one was a totally separate, non-agenda comment on the measure-end process. So I told -- I can only talk about one really. I've got my two minutes, so I'll talk about the one on the 5:30 Agenda, 7, C, F, and H. I'm concerned -- we're concerned about the waste -- organic waste ordinance that you're drawing because there's no talk of cost. We're just going to do what the state tells us. I sat through several hours of hearings at the county over the last month where money was the whole gist of what it's going to cost us, and I'm surprised that you're passing an ordinance without knowing what the bottom line is going to be for the city residents. Next, kind of the issue of assessment for abandoned property abatement and securement. That obviously needs to happen. We have a lot of abandoned houses in this town, and the question can be, can an abandoned property be declared a public nuisance and thus be taken by the city as a public nuisance because it's a fire hazard or anything else? We have so many abandoned houses burned. That's something the council should be asking its staff to look into. And finally, the State Route 204 Union Avenue. In your resolution, you say, quote, "City Council finds and declares that Caltrans has failed to take immediate action taking into semblance of loss of live experience by the residents of Bakersfield on State Route 204. The council authorizes city manager designated to take all steps necessary to compel the Caltrans Department of Transportation to be responsive to the needs of the city of Bakersfield's disadvantaged communities in furtherance of this resolution."
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed.
Only 20% of the residents died on -- pedestrians were on 204. 80% were on city streets, and I see no mention of those 80%, the 32 last year that died on city streets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, do we have any others?
That was our only public speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 3A, new business fiscal year 2021, '22 mid-year budget preview.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Good evening, or good afternoon still, Mayor and Council. This item tonight is not a voting item. This is a preview to share with council two purposes. One, to have an early look and get feedback before we come back on March 2 for adoption of the mid-year budget. Also, there was a request last year from the council that as we contemplate public safety vital services tax measure dollars, that council have an opportunity to understand the scope of those recommendations before they move forward through the full process. And so this -- tonight is to share that with you as well as some other considerations in advance of the mid-year budget. You may have to help me advance, Julie. So first, just a high-level overview. The good news is that year-to-date revenues have exceeded in most categories and in a few just met, but exceeded our initial budget estimates. And if you look at our property tax and development fees, we're on budget. I think, interestingly, in the development realm, last year we saw higher numbers than anticipated. This year, we've been off to a little bit of a slower start, but we do see a fair amount of work in the early entitlement phases that we think will round out further development revenues through other permits through the rest of the fiscal year, but those are just on par. By comparison, our transient occupancy tax is significantly higher than anticipated, and on the sales tax side, the same. Our Bradley Burns tax is 8% over our budgeted amounts. That's roughly $7 million more, and this would be funds for the current fiscal year. $7 million, we anticipate to collect more than we budgeted. And on the PSVS side, more than 16% over budgeted amounts, and we're looking at, you know, anywhere from, you know, $12 to even $19 million more in PSVS revenues than anticipated in our budget. However, I would point out that there are opportunities, of course, to be conservative and carry forward what we can into next year. Next slide, please. More importantly to the mid-year process, as we close our books each April and then audit them through December, we now have our year-end balances in front of us, and there are significant year-end balances. For the general fund side, we're looking at $29 million, and the PSVS side, $20 million of year-end balance that is available. It's worth noting that the general fund largely because of CARES and ARPA the last couple of years has impacted what some of those balances are because we were able to reimburse direct city costs towards those. Next slide, please. So with those one-time funds, of course, they should be largely focused on one-time expenditures, and my recommendation is for a significant portion of those funds to go towards our largest strategic programs. We've been talking about our ERP financial software replacement. This is a $25 million project recommending $6 million from general fund be set aside for that project. Also, our regional radio system is a $17 to $18 million project, and we don't have that fully funded either, and this would set aside those funds for when that decision comes forward. Also, given some of the challenges around pensions and CalPERS, what a Section 115 pension trust fund does is it sets monies aside specifically to help pay for our pension costs, but we keep more control over it. We don't give it to CalPERS. We set it aside. It does earn interest income. Typically, the history for these types of pension trust funds is a higher rate of return than CalPERS has been getting, and so there is some risk in that because it is in the market, but it's an opportunity to, as they say, you know, and for personal finances, to diversify our portfolio and have those funds set aside and earning interest to hedge against future pension costs when we see those peak in the eight- to 10-year timeframe. And recommending we set aside $2 million from these one-time funds for that. Also, we sped up our reserves for our cash-based reserves, and so we already have completed our goal to get to our cash-based reserves mark, but we actually had two apart goal to also build up our facility reserves, and we still have a few years left in that goal setting, and so recommending $500,000 from general fund go into that facility reserve to continue to meet those goals. This line on compensation adjustment, as we know, we're going to be doing a study related to compensation. We also know that we have negotiations pending for some of our units, and my recommendation is to set aside some funds to be available for addressing some of those adjustments into the future. This is not an amount that would -- that I am suggesting represents what we think that number will be. I think it will probably be greater than that, but this is a set aside to help us be prepared for when we have that data and information in front of us. Lastly, I'm just recommending that we don't spend at all. I think we should have $3 million of contingency. We have, again, some large expenses in the coming year, and it won't hurt us to carry that forward into next year's budget to have a little more flexibility depending on priorities of the council and also wrapping up our budget projections for the coming fiscal year. Next slide, please. Other one-time considerations, I have them actually in three different buckets. Our biggest strategic programs, but then I also think there's some priority opportunities to consider. Our fire department has their self-contained breathing apparatus, that is their oxygen tanks and masks that they take into fires. Our entire system of those apparatus is at its useful life, and to replace the entire system is a significant investment, but much needed right now. Also, there are a few other smaller safety equipment items we have an opportunity to address related to hazmat and some testing of those self-contained breathing apparatus with some one-time opportunity. Also, city facility needs, as you're aware, we've recently made some movements to address some of our challenging space needs. There are some one-time costs to do some of the tenant improvements and some of the moving costs, and also I'd like to have staff do a space needs assessment citywide to continue to be prepared for our future needs in the next two to three years, given some of our current challenges. And in one example recently with our police spacing needing to lease space, we'd like to stay ahead of issues like that and do a space study and address some of our city facilities for space in the very near term. Moving forward, also, we've had some successful pilot programs around the use of cameras for public safety. They've been successful enough. Would like to put more dollars towards that. Same for our drones program. We have drones that are doing good work, but they're not the most capable of public safety drones that would allow us to offer more services in that area. And so as a recommendation from the Safe Neighborhoods Committee, I've included a one-time funding to purchase two of the more advanced drones for our police department. Next slide, please. Some smaller but important opportunities. We applied for a grant to move forward on our traffic calming study. We were not successful. Would like to just get that moving and fund that through one-time monies. There are numerous grants that are going to be available to us and want to have some funds to be able to, by contract, get assistance in pursuing those grants. Also, we need to update our emergency operations plan. It hasn't been updated in about 10 years, and this is an opportunity to get that updated, and these would be contracted dollars to assist us with that. We have the TCC project, which is a big project coming forward, and need some dedicated project management support, and would recommend that as a one-time contract. And then our classification and compensation study, while we've been talking about it and doing the work to get it teed up, it was actually not budgeted in this fiscal year. We moved forward quicker in the planning phase, and so this would set aside the funds to do the actual study itself. Next slide, please. And then there is some opportunity to do capital improvement projects. Our regional park at Mason Moran has had a funding gap. This is an opportunity to close that funding gap and prepare to move forward there. Also, we have two projects in the downtown area. One is for a street scape project on some of our east-west corridors to develop complete streets that is consistent with the downtown street corridor study. And then that second item is in light, again, of the city hosting the California Economic Summit later this fall. There are a variety of maintenance issues that we've been trying to get at, but putting some additional resources towards those would allow us to go in and make sure that there are trees and old tree wells and bollards replaced and planters fixed in a core area of downtown, which is our core, you know, tourism industry area. Also, related to that, again, we had had some dollars to look at the convention center lobby, but feedback from council was that there's an opportunity to do a little more than just a fresh carpet and to do a bigger project there as our entryway to many visitors. And then there are some park safety projects that weren't budgeted for, but I think important and an opportunity with one-time dollars to get at those, as well as we've been very successful in getting grants for bicycle and pedestrian projects to the degree that we've actually got most of those funded, and we want to have more shovel-ready projects, and this is an opportunity to put some funding to complete one or two feasibility studies and some of the early environmental work that would allow us to have some more shovel-ready projects to be available for future funding cycles for grants. And then also, we do a number of ADA projects in any given year, but we have some catch-up work to do, and this is an opportunity to speed that up a little bit. And lastly, specific to the police department, they have two properties. It's our property room and our shooting range that have seen some incremental improvements in recent years, but to really complete those projects, it takes some additional dollars. For example, at our property room, we installed a new refrigerator freezer unit, but if the power goes out, we do not have a backup supply. And in recent experience with power outages in downtown, we were at risk of losing evidence, crime evidence, in our property room, and that's not acceptable. And so I asked the chief to let us know what we would need to round out that project, put a generator in place, to improve the HVAC system, some other upgrades, as well as our shooting range requires some additional sound baffling, and so combined, we have that $1.4 million number to help round out those two projects. I'll shift gears next to talk about public safety vital services tax one-time monies. After that slide, I'll pause and see if there's some thoughts or questions on the one-time portion because that'll be most of the one-time portion. So next slide, please. For the public safety vital services tax, it's not several different buckets. I'm actually recommending that we put all of those into these big priorities and not -- there's a little more funding on the general fund side and allowed us to do some of those strategic opportunities, but really recommending that we fund significantly the ERP, the radios, the pension trust fund, and the facility reserve. And that last item there is different from the general fund side. We had $1.7 million in this year's budget to implement our economic development strategic plan. That's actually going to be spent pretty quickly. We have a long list of achievements that we'd like to complete in the first year of the economic development strategic plan. I'm recommending to put $2 million more dollars towards that to make sure we can accomplish those goals that we've set out, and that totals the $20 million on the PSVS side. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions or comments related to one-time funding opportunities from the year-end balances that we have.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Clegg, for the presentation thus far. I'm excited, first and foremost, about the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund, actually putting dollars there. We've had this conversation for years now, and it's exciting to see this actually being funded. Just to clarify, though, we're talking about this in the context of these one-time funds, but you're not suggesting that we just fund this one time, that in fact, in future fiscal years, we plan to strategically allocate dollars to beef up the Section 115 Trust Fund.
Thank you, Councilmember. Through the chair, yes, this is an opportunity to put one-time funds and to get the fund established, but I think it would be wise to continue to put monies into that trust fund, again, to offset future pension costs and, again, control our fate a little bit more related to those costs.
And do we have a target goal?
We have not set a target goal.
Okay. And regarding the facility reserve, what is that target amount?
I don't remember clearly, so --
Sorry, put you on the spot.
No, no, that's okay. Randy McKeegan, our finance director, could speak to that.
Thank you.
Randy McKeegan, Finance Director for the city. Mayor and Councilmember Gonzalez, the current plan was to increase the reserve by the $5 million.
I'm sorry?
To $5 million.
$5 million.
Over whenever we have available funds.
Cool. Thank you.
Anything further, Councilmember Gonzalez? Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Christian, I had a few questions.
Thank you.
When we -- at the beginning, when we -- I think it was the second page, we started with the one-time considerations. I don't know what ERP, financial, and HR system means.
Thank you, Councilmember. What that is, it's our core financial system, so it's our budgeting, it's our accounts payable, it's our accounts receivable, it's our general ledger, it's the core finance system that we have as a city. And it may sound like a big dollar amount, but for an organization of our size that has 1,800 employees and, you know, we do, you know, $700 million a year, to have a system put in place like that, and the software licensing alone is probably in the range of, you know, $5 to $7 million. And then to actually implement it, because we have -- this is a system that is now almost 30 years old, and typically, an organization like ours would probably either replace their system or upgrade it every five to seven years. We're pretty far behind, and so there's going to be significant costs to carry over the data conversion of our current system and to configure this system and have what they call software integrators build it for us. So that's --
Okay, no, I understand. And on the future page four, there was another $10 million for it. Are these -- is it $6 million plus $10 that it costs to do this?
It's -- we expect it will be $25 million total. The 10 and the 6, it is separate, so it's six from general fund, 10 from PSVS, for a total of 16. We've actually already set aside, I think, another $7 or $8 million previously, but what this does is it fully funds that $25 million project.
Is that include -- I mean, conversions usually take multiple years and debugging, I mean, to get it right, three years might be optimistic. So since you can't spend all that money at once, well, we put this -- if we do this, we put it in the unspent monies in some sort of reserve fund, so it doesn't be -- it'll just go into, hey, next year, here we see again an ongoing. So if that 16 million comes in, is there some way you -- it's going to cost it, but it's over three years, let's say. There's some way you set up a reserve fund, and we know that's where we go to to complete this process. Also, do you do -- I mean, this is a lot of money, and it's a big city, and I know the stuff can cost a lot. Do you have multiple people bid on this? And so, I mean, have you already been through that process?
Great questions, Councilmember. Again, through the chair, you are right that the intent is to set up a reserve that would help fund this over multiple years, but the good news is then we won't have to spend our annual budget, operating budgets, to do the project. And we have -- you're right, it's a really big project, and so we enlisted the Government Finance Officers Association to help us do a gap analysis of what our system, current system, does, what we need our future system to do. They also helped us prepare an RFP as experts in the field to make sure it was written really tightly. We've just received 13 RFP responses on this project.
Okay.
And they're under review.
Is this same thing happening with the regional radio system, which is 3 plus 8 million? I thought when we held other meetings on this, this was up to a $20 million over the whole radio. Am I wrong? This whole conversion of the plate trace is 20 million. I don't know why that number's in my head.
We've actually used the number 17 previously with council. We've actually funded it with these two funding one-time allocations. It brings it up to 18 because it's taken time to get to the finish line, and we're not fully even ready to be at the finish line. We think those costs might be a little higher than the 17 that we've been using, so we made it 18.
But we haven't actually -- weren't you involved in some controversy in the bidding and vendors? We haven't actually resolved that and chosen someone yet, have we?
Correct.
Okay, so this is still something you'd have to set a fund up, reserve the funds. Okay, a few more questions. We have a number of things where we talk about downtown street project scape, which is fine, but at some point, will you share what are you going to do for a million dollars? I think council would like to know, what we're going to do? All new garbage cans? We're going to do street lights? We're going to do -- what are you going to do? And is it then a million dollars for street scape maintenance? Well, that sounds like an ongoing operating budget. Is that really for cleanup? It's not really ongoing, or is that a new ongoing million a year?
Good questions, Councilmember, and many of the types of projects that we'll do would be things that could be potentially addressed through maintenance or other CIP projects, but we frankly, we've fallen a bit behind in that core area, and this is a big catch-up.
Is this kind of a one-time cleanup of some stuff?
Yes, it is. One time.
I mean, there's just a lot of stuff in there. I don't know, you need a million for for police priority facility needs. I mean, at some point, there might be a little more detail. I understand convention center and stuff. I understand convention center and stuff. One -- oh, the -- we have all these one-time monies, and it seems like we found a way to spend them all, but the biggest thing that I would have thought, if we have all this one-time money, we would have voted to, is bringing our streets up to closer to the condition that they're supposed to be. We're on a maintenance schedule, we're years and years and years behind on a giant city, the roads are in terrible conditions, our major arterials, and I drive Buena Vista, which is kind of the ring on the other side of town, and I'm sure all over town we have these, and it's all cracked and splitting up because of the amount of wear and tear on them. I would like to see some of these excess one-time monies devoted to cleaning up some of the most important roads. I know we probably have $100 million we're behind, but, you know, if there's $10 million that we could find for some critical -- the big arterials that are all over the city that are in really bad shape, I would like to see that looked at as competing with some other priorities that I think, you know, some people up here might say, yeah, that's a little more important than one of these other items, but we're so -- we're derelict in our roads. I know we didn't have the money over the years, but when we have one-time opportunities, I think we ought to prioritize doing our roads, because that's what I certainly get a lot of calls about, and they're true. I drive around, we're a big city, it's too bad we're so spread out, but we've got a lot of roads that need repair, so I hope some -- sometime we can find some money. I'd love two more comments. Another area, well, when we talk about hiring people, two new tech people for this, whoever, I'm a little uncomfortable using these funds for permanent positions that, I don't know, six or seven months ago, we went through an exercise, we did our budgeting for, these are the new positions we need, we authorized what they were for one year, we get to do it again in a budgeting process, and it's like, well, are these the people we included already? Are these people we didn't talk about? I get lost on that. The budget process is a very good process for everyone in the council to see, here's what I'm adding to my staff in each department. Department heads come up, explain why, we debate it, we finally agree, and it's like, well, out of left field, did we make a mistake on the technical people? Did we make a mistake on a financial services something in the police department? Why wasn't that discussed? So we could all vote yes or no, put it in the budget. So I'm uncomfortable making full-time new positions sort of out of nowhere, nobody gets to really discuss it or know why, which the budget process is very good for allowing us all to understand that and debate it and give it a go. So that's an area that makes me uncomfortable. And finally, you probably have an answer to this, but -- so I'd love the answer. I know there's a lot of money here, and everything's worthwhile, but I thought one of the major -- the only major park thing, because we already budgeted to clean up all existing parks, every single one of them, we're cleaning them up. The major park was the re -- I'll call it re-envisioning, completely new renovation of Martin Luther King Park. And I -- to me, that's a big priority in this town, and I don't see any money in here for it with all these -- it's maybe buried in here somewhere, but, you know, with all of this extra money from the government, I see something that could cost us $10 or $20 million to do this thing right, to make that a community center and a great place for everybody, but -- and I know we wouldn't spend all the money in one year, that'd take a while, but I didn't -- is there money in -- is there money in here for that?
Thank you.
And could you just tell us where it is?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. In this mid-year budget, there's actually not proposed money for MLK Park, but there's a couple of reasons why, because we're thinking on the same page that we need to continue to set monies aside there. We've actually identified about $1 million in last year's budget that will go towards that project, and we're also proposing about $2 million under the ARPA monies that would go towards MLK Park re-envisioning. We've also applied for a couple of grant opportunities, and we've also advocated for consideration as a state set aside for our delegation monies for MLK Park. So in conversation with Rick Anthony about MLK Park, we feel like, as it's going through the planning process, we've set aside several million dollars for that project and anticipate more grant monies coming. We want to get a little bit of a sense of some of those community priorities and what they want to see before putting additional dollars, because we have about, you know, $3.5 million total, you know, already allocated towards that project.
But so, we should -- a lot of that is planning, visioning, maybe a little bit of real stuff, but then we would expect to see large, in future years' budgets, large outlays, like we did for Mason Marin, like we did for the soccer parks, you know, those are $10 million things we would see in our budget. This is the next kind of major park in this town, and so we just ought to know then we'll get it going here, but we should expect to see those if we're really going to do something down there in our next couple of years' budgets. No one should be surprised. So I just raised that, because I got the impression with all of this windfall of money, we might be finding more of it for there, but if that's not the case, then take what we can get. Just -- we should all know that a major park like that does cost a lot of money.
Yeah, I think that is fair. If I could also, I'll go back and speak to the roads question, and then on the positions, I've got a future slide coming up, and I'll save that for that slide. On the roads topic, again, we were thinking along the same lines, and I have heard from council and interest in roads. I initially had on my list for recommendations some additional dollars for streets and street medians. In consultation with staff and public works, we've already added a lot of local roadwork and a lot of median work, and we felt like adding dollars at this mid-year juncture, they don't really have the capacity to do more projects during the current fiscal year. I think we'll see a lot of big dollars in the annual budget process that go towards local roads, and also I have asked our new public works director to take a look at some of these projects and see, is there a way to package up a big portion of CIP projects into an RFP to get some additional project management, design, and construction done under one big project, because we have so many CIP projects right now. And I think that's the only way we get at them faster is to package it up in that way. Otherwise, we felt like if we added dollars to the mid-year, the work really wouldn't realistically get done because we're at capacity with how many road projects we're doing today, but looking at ways to try and increase our capacity to do more projects into the future.
Is this a final request that just stays exactly how it is if we all vote tonight, or is this something you could come back and refine more as we move along?
This is -- yeah, we're not voting tonight. I was wanting to give a prelook so I could get the feedback, and we'll vote on this on March 2nd, so there's opportunities to refine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, and to put a fine point on the ERP and the radios. So are both of those fully funded after?
If we made these allocations, they would be fully funded.
And then I also appreciate my colleagues' interest and advocacy for MLK Park. I think that there won't always be opportunities to make large allocations, right? And I think right now, while we have the time to make significant contributions to game-changer projects like re-envisioning MLK Park, I think there is some opportunity, even if it's, you know, not $3 million, but if there is an opportunity to make a contribution, I think while we have these opportunities, we should be making them. Kind of on that note, I also want to retouch the topic of TCC. I know that MLK Park and the re-envisioning project is on that list, and there's a component to that grant application that requires a local match, and so I just wanted to touch base on that and see, do we still have a game plan for that, and where are those monies going to come from?
You are correct, Councilmember Arias, that the TCC project, the more match that we produce, the more funds would be available to us, up to a 50% match. And again, you know, the roughly $3 million that I mentioned, you know, would be a great start on leverage on that project specifically. We actually have a number of other projects, both with ARPA funds that we're seeing as potential leverage. We can use our CDBG and SB1 monies as leverage, as well as our general fund and PSVS dollars as leverage. So we, you know, with a project that could be upwards of $30 million for TCC, we would look at the many projects that are happening within those boundaries and consistent with those projects as leverage funding, you know, to the tune of many millions of dollars.
Okay, fantastic. And then have we gotten guidance from the state on when that application is going to be due?
The timeframe continues to shift, and so it's been delayed a couple of times, and it's looking like that -- I think the last that I heard is that it would be open as of April.
Okay, great. Shifting gears towards the traffic calming study, I'm really excited to see that we're making some contributions to doing a study like this. I think it's so necessary. I think our conversation with Caltrans about Union really shed some light on that interest from the community standpoint, from the stakeholder standpoint. I'm wondering, maybe a two-part question. One, are we treating these types of projects and investments to make our streets safer the same as we would for CIP projects? And two, are we making contributions to a fund so that when we do receive the feedback in the study, we can start tackling some of those?
So, Councilmember, how I would answer that is, we do have a pedestrian and bicycle safety plan, and we pull projects every year from that plan to include in our CIP. There are other CIP projects that are just, you know, straight street improvements and the like, but we do have projects every year that we pull from that plan. What I would say about Union Avenue as an example, you know, that's been very timely, those conversations. It is on my list that I expect that we'll need to put some funds in our CIP set aside for next year's, you know, fiscal budgeting process towards that project, but, you know, to date, we haven't, you know, set those funds aside into a separate fund, but I think through the annual budgeting process, we should.
Okay, great. Two more questions. On the classification and compensation study, do we have a timeline for when that's going to get started and be completed?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. We have completed the RFP process. We've negotiated with the vendor and expect to see that come to council at one of our next probably two meetings. It's a process that will take us, you know, probably, it's a range, I think, you know, probably from six to 12 months. When I say that, there are three different components. One is to look at classifications themselves, how they're written. One is to do the market compensation comparisons, and the other is to actually have some policy conversations with council about what do we consider a market rate? And are we going to base this off of salary or total compensation? So we've sped it up as quickly as we can. We're going to actually bring forward those policy considerations in a separate conversation from class and comp, kind of in advance and in parallel with the studies actually being done, because that will take time. The classifications piece is what takes the longest amount of time. Those compensation comparisons, there's a lot of data out there that can be leveraged, and that can actually happen pretty quickly. And so kudos to Kristi Tenter, our HR director, for finding a way to narrow the scope of that classification review to try and reduce the amount of time it will take. And so we're actually in those final conversations with the consultants about that narrower scope that would allow us to move quickly, and so I'll be able to share that with you when that item comes forward, how long we think it will take. But it's probably, you know, four or six months to get through the classification piece, and then the compensation piece will be fairly quick after that. And again, trying to find ways to make that range shorter, on the shorter end than the longer end.
Okay, got it. So, and I can't remember exactly when we start entering contract negotiations, but based on that timeline, it looks like we might not get the classification compensation study until after those negotiations start. Is that right?
So our contracts end as of June of this year. Typically, at least historically in recent years, those conversations have taken place in the springtime leading up to that, but I would think, also, I would say, historically, those conversations usually go beyond July 1 in fairness, and our goal is to have that information in a path that is close to parallel with when we could be wrapping up those conversations.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, but Councilmember Freeman hit an important point of mine, and that is the need to address our local roads and to accelerate our efforts to address some of our maintenance issues related to roadways. And, Christian, this is something that you and I have talked about from time to time, and I'm really interested in exploring ways in which we can really accelerate those efforts, whether it be purchasing new equipment, adopting new technology, whatever it is that we -- or contracting out, whatever we can do that's innovative to accelerate the work, I think is worthwhile. But I also wanted to ask, you know, previous conversations I had with City Manager Tandy, former City Manager Tandy, was that with, you know, there are additional, there are other funds that were or had been for the last 15, 16 years dedicated to TRIP that now will be becoming available over the next fiscal year or two, that we'll be able to allocate towards local roads and will be accelerating our work.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll take the opportunity to just confirm that, and I say, you know, in respect, I've said, you know, where can we fund more dollars? And Randy does his job well and reminds me that we have our SB1 funds, our TDF funds, and our utility surcharge funds, all going towards local road projects. And so we're looking at, you know, every year, you know, $30 to $60 million worth of streets monies, and that's more than we've, you know, had historically. And so I think we are in catch-up mode with those funds, and so the recommendation has been to focus our general fund monies on these other priorities, but there's probably still opportunities to think about accelerating that work, you know, because it is a strategic priority. But it's worth noting, we have a lot of local road funds that are doing a lot of projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I don't see any other requests to speak. City manager, would you like to continue with the next section?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Next slide, please. So on the general fund side, I do not recommend allocating any ongoing dollars. Next slide, please. On the PSVS side, I think this speaks to Councilmember Freeman's comment that, you know, all of the previous recommendations were one-time funds. Typically, I would be very cautious to add ongoing considerations at mid-year, but we're in a scenario where we're looking at, you know, our public safety vital services tax being $19 million more in revenues this year, and those will be ongoing revenues. We're looking at this year, it being a -- we're anticipating $100 million in revenues from PSVS. Conservatively, at this point, we're thinking next year's budget would be something that we would probably put in the mid-90s million-dollar range to be conservative, but these are funds that will be available to us year after year into the future, and so it is an opportunity to consider some of the pain points that we've been feeling. I agree with Councilmember Freeman, we don't want to add a lot of things mid-process. These are not things that we missed. These are things that have emerged as challenges over this last six months that we've identified. But I think, in fairness, also, the annual fiscal process is around the corner, and that's why I'm seeking out council feedback on this. There's one item on ongoing funding that I'm recommending, separate from positions, and that is to put monies into a downtown redevelopment fund. This is something we've talked about, but we've struggled to identify the funding for it. What this would do is incentivize development in the downtown core. There's been conversations about reducing some of the development costs for developers to try and help them come downtown, and my recommendation has not been to reduce any of our fees, but rather, if we set aside a fund that could offset the cost of those fees, you know, as a strategic policy choice from the council, that would help create and facilitate more development in the downtown. Moving to the positions, you'll see that there's one or two here and there, except for a big number of 20, and that is the Park Ranger Program. Again, typically, we would... Again, typically, we wouldn't move on something like this in its scope and size at a mid-year, but the need is acute. Even with adding, this would put 18 rangers into the field, one supervisor and other rangers. This also has a little bit of clerical and analytical support to it. But even with 18 rangers, I would have to manage expectations that this doesn't mean we'd have a ranger in every park all the time, every day. This would allow us to put rangers in parks where we're having our biggest challenges and issues, and to be able to respond to challenges and issues in other parks on an as-needed basis. But our focus would be along the multi-use path on the River Trail, the river area, and some of our toughest parks that deal with homelessness and crime. The Park Ranger program is not designed to be a sworn officer like some other counties have, but likewise, we're not talking about a Forest Service ranger who's just doing maybe community program or engagement. These will be eyes and ears in our parks that have the ability to write citations and the ability to contact directly our police impact teams to have them come out. And the goal is to enhance the safety and perceived safety in our parks, as well as have positive community engagement with the public. We can share more details about this in staff materials lead up to March 2, but that is the overall concept of the Park Rangers program, is to increase the safety in our parks. And this is a big new add, the $1.2 million represents their equipment costs and the remaining costs of this fiscal year. On an annual basis, this looks more like a $2.4 million budget amount for those 20 positions year over year, starting next fiscal year. Beyond that, in the police department, as that department continues to grow and they take on additional initiatives, we've found that there's challenges with our fiscal unit able to handle all of the reporting and accounting and paperwork, and this would provide important support to help them stay up with the many initiatives we have. On the economic development side, I've anticipated the opportunity and need to just continue to grow that unit over time, and this would allow us to get at some needs in our business success team that is designed to facilitate businesses and new businesses and developers coming through our different permitting processes. And then on the technology services side, as you'll probably note from the recent risk assessment and the grand jury findings, the threats to safety continue to mount, and this would be an opportunity to continue to grow that department to meet the ongoing challenges around that. And then these last two are Clean City, we've deployed eight Clean City teams into the field, they're doing good work, but we feel there's an opportunity to connect their work with the rapid response teams and the police impact teams, and also have some eyes and ears in the field. They're largely managed by administrators who are giving them their assignments of where to go. Having someone in the field will help us to make sure the right work is happening in the right way, and making those connections to be a little more efficient in coordinating our cleanup efforts out in the field. Lastly, for public works, as we noted, frankly, we're creating a backlog of projects because we have more funds than we have the capacity to get those projects done. And this is one position that would allow an analyst-level employee to do a lot of the legwork in getting contracts and budgets put together and allow our management staff to focus on the implementation and the delivery of those different projects, and we feel like it'll help us move on our capital projects much quicker. Together, that is about $4.2 million. Again, that's out of $19 million additional that is expected. I didn't put a bigger number there because I think, as council member Freeman pointed out, we should be cautious at mid-year with ongoing funds, but these are some strategic opportunities that are in front of us to consider. Next slide, please. I just want to also point out that we brought to council a framework for ARPA funding in the fall, but we did not appropriate all those funds to specific either set-asides or projects. And so I'm recommending at the mid-year on March 2 that we start putting some of these funds into dedicated buckets. Of course, direct staffing costs, we've actually accrued more than the $7 million, but we think that we can reimburse at least $7 million towards direct staffing costs. The affordable housing, we're ready to put that amount of money into our current request for proposals and projects on affordable housing. Combine that $5 million with our $5 million already in the budget and be able to do $10 million worth of affordable housing projects. We've also talked about trying to use ARPA monies to turn over some of those blighted properties and turn them into affordable housing. We're prepared to start on the acquisition side of that. We're still working on some of the rehabilitation and backend of that, but we'd like to put some monies in the budget so we can start going and getting some of those properties right away. Brundage-Lane Navigation Center, we've talked about that recently, we've put the funds towards that. We had a set aside under Public Health for a wellness initiative, and I've been sharing information with the council about an opportunity to partner with many community partners on an initiative called Blue Zones. This would not contract for that, spend that money today, but it would take those ARPA monies and make them a set aside available to commit to that at a future date as council works out the details of that, but it would signal support from the city towards that initiative. On the tourism, this is the same dollar figure you saw in the framework. We are ready to deploy these funds to support some of our local venues, to support specific programs that help get a few folks back open that have still not gotten open, and then also to continue to support some of the additional operating costs at the arena, given the challenges of not being able to hold as many events at that location. And then lastly, on this page, it is a direct ARPA category to be able to fund gun violence intervention. We have been funding that out of our funds and a grant from the state, but we see this as an opportunity to expand our program and also use this as match against a state grant that would allow us to apply for as much as $5 million of state monies to help us with this gun violence intervention efforts. Next slide, please. And then the final one here on ARPA, we've talked about the food bank. This would just allocate those dollars to push that item forward. We feel like there's an opportunity to do a workforce development and job training program that's a specific category for ARPA that would help us focus on some of our key sectors from our economic development strategic plan, and build up the skills and place apprentices or interns into jobs in those key sectors. We're also ready to move forward with a facade improvement program concept. Now, there's $9 million total set aside for economic development initiatives in the ARPA framework. We're not recommending appropriating all of those at mid-year, but we're ready to move on the facade improvements. We're ready to fund, put funding into our economic opportunity areas that have seen a lot of demand recently, and to start working on a few projects and key business districts in the revitalization areas. And then last two items, this is a more specific item than the council has seen before out of the affordable housing buckets in the ARPA funds, but staff has identified a gap in being able to rehab some of the homes in our qualified census tracts to help individuals of low income fix an HVAC or fix a front door and address some code issues. This would be a program that would help us get at that issue in our disadvantaged neighborhoods. And then this one, I'll have more details leading up to March 2 as well, but anticipate trying to narrow in on what ways the city could provide support to our healthcare industry that has been hard-hit in supporting our local hospitals and look, to have more details on that again as we get closer to March 2. So I will pause there and see if there are any questions on either the ongoing or the ARPA.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Council member Smith.
Thank you, mayor. Few questions. We're talking a lot about local roads and stuff, and I haven't heard, you've been looking at the federal infrastructure bill, does it have considerable money for local roads?
We're still not certain, actually, on that, and some of it is, like, some of the funds we are seeing will end up going to the state and then trickle down from the state to us, and we'll have to apply in some of those buckets. And some of them will be specific to certain types of roads or certain types of projects, so we're still watching that one pretty close, but it's not all clear yet.
Okay. And then ongoing recommendations and ongoing staff, we had a couple of years ago hired a bike and ped half-person, and now that person has moved on, and I don't know, it's mid-year or final year, but as chairman of Kern College, I see us losing millions of dollars in opportunities because nobody's focused on that. And I also see if we're going to redo a lot of local roads like we're asking Caltrans to do, are we really going to do them complete streets-wise? And unless somebody is focused on that, it's not going to happen. So we're missing out on a lot of money, and we're not as safe as we could be if somebody is focused on that. Tourism, industry, I think public art can be a big part of that and could be included in that. I don't know if that's in the thought process or not. And then on the blighted property purchases, I think that's an excellent first step to try and move some of these problems, but I think Mr. Turnipseed's idea, can we condemn them? And even beyond that, we've talked in the past about eminent domain and going through whatever we need to do upfront with the economic development plan to move forward on that, and I would like to, again, state, that's, I think, a good long-term strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Smith. Council member Gray.
Thank you for your presentation. I've got a question on the ARPA appropriations under the gun violence intervention expansion, $2 million. Can you give us more detail on that?
Yeah, thank you, council member. Getting through the chair, what we have in place right now is three community-based organizations that we're working closely with law enforcement and city manager's office. Law enforcement does data-informed targeted enforcement related to gun violence, but we also complement that with outreach workers from our community-based organizations that are contacting people at high risk of gun violence and offering services and a path away from that lifestyle. So what this $2 million would do is a couple of things. One, we're wanting to expand our programs to include additional number of outreach workers to reach more of these very high-risk. We only have three outreach workers dedicated under our current grant towards that work. We'd like to dedicate more people to doing that work. It would also, again, in complement with this grant that we're going to apply for, we're going to expand our work to include hospital intervention resources to community-based organizations that have caseworkers in hospitals, working with individuals who have been victims of gun violence. And we also plan to reach out and do a early intervention program in our schools, and we're working with school districts to identify young people that are at high risk of the same type of activity, and offering them case management services and interventions as well at that level. And so we're trying to create a comprehensive system that would have prevention and intervention and incident responses as well to gun violence.
Okay, thank you. That's excellent. And the next thing, food bank construction. Do we have a food bank presently in the city of Bakersfield? Or I don't?
Yeah, the Community Action Partnership of Kern operates a food bank here in Kern County. They've just unveiled plans for a significant expansion. We have spent some CDBG dollars towards that expansion, but they've identified a funding gap that still remains to complete that large, it's a doubling of the food bank, and it will make a huge impact in the community. We view these ARPA dollars as an opportunity to help fill that funding gap and create more food security through that food bank expansion.
Okay, so that's not in connection with CityServe or any of these other organizations? This is separate?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member Gray. Council member Arias.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of points that I want to make. One, I'm ecstatic about the Park Ranger program. I don't see Rick in the audience, but he deserves a tremendous amount of credit for coming up with the idea, and I think it's really going to help us in making safer some of our parks in the city. One of the things that I want to take a moment to talk about and lift up is that I think we need more city staff that are community-oriented and public-facing, and I think this is one of those positions that I see as an opportunity to build those meaningful relationships with some of our key stakeholders, in particular parts of town. As you know, parks are a very cherished community resource, and so I think that building those relationships, and if there's some way in the way in which we design the program, we must ensure that there's accountability and some opportunity for those folks to actually build those relationships. The other thing that I'm really excited about is the facade improvement loan program or grant program. I know we haven't decided exactly how that program's going to look, but I just want to ensure that different types of facilities are eligible for that program. If we're looking at places like Union and Brundage, it's not all just businesses, it's a collection of different types of facilities, so I want to make sure that where we're within the law, businesses, nonprofits, and other types of facilities are eligible so that we can really create a cohesive corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Arias. I don't see any other requests to speak. Do you have anything to conclude with? If not, I'll ask the vice mayor.
Motion to receive and file.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cash your votes. We need some help up here with the voting screen. If you're not able to do that, we'll just do it by roll call.
Vice mayor Weir?
Yes.
Council member Arias?
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Freeman?
Aye.
Council member Gray?
Aye.
And council member Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 3B, New Business: City Charter Review Considerations.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, mayor and council. In consideration, I want to give consideration also to time and note that we have a closed session item that follows this item. This is a topic that does not have a particular deadline. I will go through the slides, but would reflect if there's a need or an opportunity, we can come back to this topic, but I'll try and move quickly through these considerations. So our city charter, as has been recently noted, it has been some time since the city charter was updated. Councilman Parlier made a referral for staff to look at some of the factors and options in looking at our city charter. So what I'll just outline for council today is a framework that there are objectives that the council can consider in, what are we trying to accomplish in reviewing the charter? There are some options around approach, scope, and then I'll just share some perspective on timing and costs. I think some of the ways that you can think about the charter is, there are opportunities to address specific changes or mandated changes. I think because of our agreement with Department of Justice, we have an obligation to look at civil service for police. It's one of our objectives. I think--
I think there are some opportunities that we could consider for modernization or update based on that opportunity or concern. And my chief focus, you know, as an administrator, would be really around, are there opportunities for efficiencies or clarifications that might be, you know, based on, you know, modern best practices? But I would suggest, you know, at this high level, that a charter is the core enabling legislation for a municipality and that, like a constitution, you don't, you know, change it wholesale typically. You don't change it all the time, and it should be the core fundamental principles and values of an organization. I bring that up for two reasons. One, there may be some elements of our charter that over time appear to be perhaps a little prescriptive. Maybe it made sense initially, but one example I've given is, you know, we have a requirement that's within our civil service section of the charter that states that police dispatch employees have a six-month probationary period. Our police chief has identified that that six-month timeframe is a little bit too short to make a full evaluation at a hard position to learn, are they ready to keep that job or not? He would like to change that to one year. Because it's listed in the charter, that would require a ballot vote of the public to change it from six months to 12 months. I would suggest that that's something that, you know, we could evaluate, does that really need to be that specific in the charter? Could that be a municipal code section? That's just one example of a reason you might look for an efficiency or best practice. But I would suggest, again, changes, you know, to the charter should be really viewed from the lens that it's a, there's a reason that there's a high bar to make those changes, and that changes to the charter should not be contemplated lightly. There's different approaches that different cities have done, and we do not have a prescribed requirement within our charter for how charter reviews take place. Some cities have requirements within their charters that it's done by commission or committee, or that it is done in a certain time sequence. Our charter does not have those segments. So it could be done by the city council taking on these topics. It could be done by the establishment of a committee of the city council to take on and review some of those aspects. Many cities will create a charter commission. Those charter commissions can be more long-term in nature, sort of perennial, but most cities establish commissions just to look at a specific charter amendment within a specific scope and a specific timeframe. Also, it's common to have assistance in having an outside review of the charter by contract. You could have a law firm, you could have a consulting firm, you could have an audit firm, look at our charter for best practices or just make comparisons to, like, benchmark cities or organizations. And then lastly, I would suggest that if there is interest in looking at a notable scope of charter review, it does take a significant amount of staff time to staff, whether that's a council committee or a commission, and prepare those materials, prepare those agendas, and be present at those meetings to answer questions and bring, you know, forward recommendations related to the topics of review. My recommendation to council is that the approach is based on also the scope, and so let me shift gears to that next slide. Of course, I'm just putting these out as potential options. You could say we want to look at the full scope of the charter. My professional recommendation to you is that not every segment of the charter needs a look or an update. I think it's been referenced that our recent risk assessment noted that our charter is aged, but also that risk assessment did not say specifically what about the charter needed to take, needed to have a review, just that it, you know, it'd been some time since the last update. And also, that risk assessment noted that the governance model of the city was very low-risk because the decision-making is assessed on their part, came forward through a quality governance process. So another option is to have a more targeted review. You can pick the sections that you would want to be considered. And I've listed here these five because these are areas where I've heard either interest or I've seen elements that could create opportunities for efficiencies. Civil service for police, that is both the hiring of the police chief, but also the hiring of other employees in the police department. Civil service for fire, same, the rules for how we hire those folks, and miscellaneous for other employees. I believe that there are probably some efficiencies that could be available to us through our civil service process that would, again, be a little less prescriptive than is necessary in the charter from my own assessment. I've also heard some interest about the legislative department, that is, the duties and powers of mayor and council, and how some of the other aspects, like, you know, council pay are determined. And then lastly, there's a section called Public Works and Supplies. I've put the dash for procurement. That's not its official title. It's called Public Works and Supplies, but there are some sections that could be worth reviewing to ensure that our procurement processes are current and up to date. My recommendation to council would be if there is interest in reviewing segments of the charter, that there would be two considerations. One, we have an obligation to take forward language related to the hiring of the police chief, and I would take that issue separately from a broader consideration. And I put that in the administrative report to council that there is language that has already been looked at because we knew this was coming, and that we could ask the city attorney to bring forward that language, you know, soon to council and create a process to consider that element in the near term. If there is, if there is interest in looking at other segments of the charter, I would recommend those be handled in a different scope. And in light of that, let me also shift to this next slide. You know, charter amendments are required to come forward in general election ballots only. So we have 2022, 2024 as just examples over the next two general elections. It takes several months to really bring forward even one or two charter considerations. It takes considerable review and consideration, and this council needs to adopt any recommended ballot language in the June to July timeframe so that it can be on the ballot by the, you know, from the county by August to meet those balloting deadlines. The council could try and take on several aspects all at once. My recommendation would be if there is interest in looking beyond the police chief consideration, to have a phased approach. I would, I would only take targeted items, and when I reference that, I reference principally the police chief consideration in this current cycle, and then can create a process by which, an approach by which additional considerations could be made throughout this next year, year and a half, in advance of 2024. Because I do think you need to anticipate really 12 months to appropriately review any additional considerations if it's beyond that of the police chief. Lastly, I would just point out that there has been some conversation, if we're going to look at the police chief, do we look at the fire chief at the same time? I think if you're looking to create some parity there, it would be appropriate to have that consideration, but I would point out that every additional element that we add to a ballot measure adds to the amount of information that our residents need to process and could bring into question, you know, whether folks are supportive of that particular ballot measure. The more you put on the ballot, sometimes the harder it is to, for folks to feel like they can support a particular measure. And so that's, those are two competing considerations. Lastly, it's important to know that any ballot measure will cost at a minimum $100,000 that we, of the city funds that we place on the ballot beyond our other election costs that we already paid to consolidate our elections with the county. The more measures that you put on, that cost increases, and the more language you put in any particular ballot measure could also increase those costs. I do think it's fair to acknowledge that if you take a phased approach, that could mean multiple ballot measures with those costs for each one, and that every additional consideration taken up could be larger dollars to put those measures onto the ballot. So again, the intent tonight was to put out some of the key considerations council needs to take. If there's questions about my particular recommendations, I hope I've been clear about, at least, I, for tonight, it's very important, I think, to recommend segmenting out the police chief component, and if there is interest in pursuing other elements, I'm happy to clarify my recommendations related to those. But this is the last slide, and this is really to tee up an opportunity for council to provide direction for staff on how we approach this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Conversation's been going since, seems like I was elected 10 years ago, about charter review, and so I do believe that it's time to look at it, and obviously with the DOJ agreement and then the police chief needs to move forward. I personally feel that, you know, the police and fire, in the public's mind, you know, public safety could go together. And so my feeling is, is that we would move immediately on the police and fire changes because I know that the police department wants to move through the recommendations of the agreement as fast as possible. And then on the rest of it, I do believe there's obviously room for improvement and room for updating and modernizing. So it seems to me maybe the best first step is to have a consultant like Moss Adams who looked at our risk analysis to come back with, you know, what are the best practices and comparisons and stuff? That might be something to start the community conversation to move forward. So that's my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Any other colleagues? Councilmember Gray, and then Councilmember Arias.
I just want to say anytime you've, you're working with a charter, I mean, this is very, very serious stuff. We need to approach it very cautiously and not be getting over, you know, overzealous about it. I would agree with the phased approach to where you're not taking on too much at a time and where the public can be more involved and, because this is their city. And I think if we take that approach and be more cautious about it, then we're going to do a better job of it. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Arias.
I agree with my colleagues. I think taking a targeted review of the charter is necessary, and I think taking a phased approach as well is, I think it's, I think it's good practice to do that, to ensure that, you know, we get broad community input on how we want to move forward with that. I did have a question. Would it be possible to, in the same election, put two separate ballot measures, one with mandated changes to the charter and then one with other?
Councilmember, yes, you can have multiple ballot measures on a ballot related to the charter. In fact, I would suggest that if a phased approach was pursued, and in 2024, there were more than one aspect of the charter under consideration, that it may be appropriate to split those out into more than one ballot measure. Of course, you have to consider cost and whatnot, but I think it helps to provide the clarity and affords the public an opportunity to take each issue on uniquely.
Got it. Then I'll just close by saying that I support Councilmember Smith's idea of contracting with someone like Moss Adams. Thanks.
I don't see any other requests to speak.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
If I may, there's opportunity, if there's a desire to make a more specific motion there with some, city attorney has direction.
Yeah, I have direction, and you, our office will bring back to the council in the meeting in March, language for the revised police chief proposed charter amendment as well as the fire. It will be separate, and you will then have an opportunity to take public input and cast your motion at that time.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, would you like to start closed session, or do you think the length of it would be for, go ahead and start?
We are adjourned to closed session.
Closed session. We're just going to close out our 3:30 meeting, and then we'll get started in a few minutes. Reconvening, the 3:30 meeting at 5:41. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. There was one item on closed session, item 4A, and by unanimous motion, it was continued to our next meeting, which is February 23. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:41.